Hi Marcus. It looks like Joy Vaughn is also going to be joining us. She's from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife at the state.
That's great.
Somebody has a lot of background noise going on.
Like a radio. I think it might be Vicky.
Okay, I'll have him turn the TV down.
Larry, you gotta turn the TV down.
You could hit the mute button too Vic.
Well, I did, but then my system is so sensitive. I got a there. Did it go away?
Yes, thank you, Vicky.
Yeah.
Well, my watch says two minutes past, but I know I'm always a little fast. So Chair, whenever you're ready.
Okay, if the staff would like to call roll, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
If we'd like to call roll, we can begin this.
All right, thank you Chair. Vicky Ashley?
Here.
Russell Hargrave? I see your face.
I'm here, thanks.
Thank you. Brad DeHart has planned absence today. Lynn McIntyre?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Keith Willis?
Here.
Great, thank you. Chris Shano?
Here.
Leroy Booth?
Here.
Marcus Swift?
Here.
And staff, Kelly?
Kelly Howesley Glover, Long Range Planner.
Thank you, and I'm Angie Brewer, Wasco County Planning Director. I don't believe we have any other staff on the hearing this evening, although some of them may be watching through the streaming option. That'll turn it back over to you Chair.
Okay. First order would be if we have a missing voting member, which would be Commissioner DeHart, we can put the first alternate in, which I believe is Commissioner Booth, Leroy Booth, right?
Correct.
So we will acknowledge him as a voting member tonight. Do we, that's all I need to do, right, on that? Okay. All right, this meeting is being recorded and will be publicly available. All participants must mute themselves unless they are speaking. Lines providing feedback while not speaking will be muted to ensure others can hear. Only you can unmute yourself using the mic icon. If you are participating by phone, unmute yourself by dialing star six. They will need to bring that up again, probably when the people on the phone are talking, because I think some people forgot that. Participants behaving inappropriately will be promptly removed from the meeting. The Chair will specifically invite participants for public comment at the appropriate time, so please be patient, wait to be called on. Please refrain from using the comment feature unless directed by the Chair. It will distract from the intended flow of the hearings procedure. At this time, I would like to invite the public to unmute their mics and share any comments they may have for items that are not listed on the agenda. So if it's things that we're dealing with tonight, please save your comments for later, but if you have something that you would like to speak about that's not on the agenda, at this time would be your moment to go ahead and jump in here. Okay, this time we're going to open the hearing. This hearing is a continuance from September 1st. In the interest of clarity, we will separate the hearings into two sections. One ordinance 20-001 and one for ordinance 20-004. We will begin with the Planning Commission's consideration of the land use application file 921-18-000221, a periodic review work task 18, a post acknowledgement plan amendment to revise goals four and eight. These files are related to ordinance 20-001. The procedure I'd like to follow tonight is first I'd like the planning staff, the planning department staff, to present their report. We'll provide an opportunity for the public to testify, and then the hearing is scheduled for two hours. We have an additional hearing to conduct within this time. We will try to conclude both hearings by 5:00 PM. Testimony will be limited to three minutes. Staff will time each comment period and mute when the three minutes have expired. For the rules of evidence, the rules of evidence are as follows. No person shall present irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. If you have submitted written comments, please do not restate it in oral testimony unless you have further information to add. If you testified on September 15, if you testified on September 1st, I believe that should say, you will be asked to only to testify on new information. Please don't restate your testimony from the first. Evidence received shall be of a quality that reasonable persons rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the criteria applicable to the subject hearing. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes further appeal based on that issue. At this point, we'd like to disclose in the interest of ex parte contact, does any commission member wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial interest in this matter? Does any commission member wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts?
I had contact with several members of Juniper Flat. They have contacted me in regards to the recreational overlay. But I have no interest. I have no landownings or anything over there.
Dr. Brewer?
That's acceptable, as long as Commissioner Ashley, as long as you feel like you can participate neutrally and represent.
I can.
Yeah.
It was more they wanted information more than anything.
Great, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? And if you're on the phone, star six will unmute you at this point. Okay, is there any member of the audience who wishes to question? Who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on the behalf of Wasco County in this matter? Okay, at this point, I'd like to make sure that all participants mute themselves and hold questions until the end of staff's presentation. And at this point, I'd like to let Dr. Glover take over.
Thank you Chair. I'm gonna go ahead and start with the first matter tonight related to ordinance 2000 dash, or excuse me, 20-001. Okay, so I did modify this presentation slightly based on some input from the public on the September 1st, just to add clarity. So essentially, the ordinance which were required by state law to reference in the notice that we send to folks is a lot of whereas such as kind of language, but what the meat and potatoes of, what it's really suggesting is those updates evolved in goal five, goal four, and goal eight, and that includes revisions to the following maps. EPD 8, which is our deer and elk winter range, EPD 12, which is sensitive birds, and also the proposal for a new destination resort eligibility map, which would be, if adopted, Environmental Protection District 15. I'm gonna start with work task 18. This was the last work task we had as part of our periodic review work plan approved by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and specifically during the visioning phase of Wasco County 2040, so back in 2017 and 2018, when we saw public comment and also comment from our partner agencies and organizations, ODF and W notified the Wasco County Planning Department at that time that our sensitive wildlife maps were no longer current with the maps that they actually use to advise, and there's a trigger related to goal five in state law that suggests when we enter periodic review, if ODF and W tells us the maps need to be updated, then that triggers this process. In conjunction with those new maps, we've made some recommendations for some new policies, and we are also recommending to eliminate any sort of stopgap for folks when this is enacted and when we can get to the Ludo update, we're actually being aggressive to update the land use and development ordinance language related to EPD with this update. As I mentioned, this is a requirement of the process that we've chosen to update our comprehensive plan, so periodic review triggers this update. As I mentioned, these are, these maps are based on maps that ODF and W already uses to advise development issues in Wasco County, and specifically with conditional use permits, it's resulted in some significant delays and confusion with applications being processed, particularly with alternative or commercial energy facilities. And so the goal of this is really to streamline the existing permitting process and make sure that it's very transparent what maps and information ODF and W relies on when making decisions about sensitive wildlife. Up here's a copy of all the Oregon administrative rules, so those are the rules that are enacted to direct agencies and also local jurisdictions to enact the revised statutes essentially, and all of the ones that are related to land use are in Oregon Administrative Rule 660. Goal five is specifically in Division 23, and there are a couple different triggers in there that not only define what we have to do, but how we have to do and when we have to do it. So we followed the, based on advisement from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and in conjunction with ODF and W, we followed to the letter of the law what was required of us. So as I mentioned, ODF and W updated their maps, I believe in 2012, and I have on this screen a snapshot of what they use. It's a compass tool that has all of their sensitive information for animals in the state of Oregon, and basically this demonstrates that what we're really trying to do again is make our maps consistent with the maps that ODF and W uses. So that does include the expansion of EPD 8 into South County, Deep South County, and also parts of northeastern Wasco County. So one of the things that folks obviously are really anxious to know is what does this mean? And really, as we see it, the net result for folks who are already in the CPD is that they will benefit, particularly if they're in A1160, from us adding exempt uses, and that's for things like farm structures, accessory structures, and then we've been able to allow for an exemption for farm dwellings. And we've also negotiated to remove some voluntary standards and the fencing standards that people told us during our roadshow meetings in February made absolutely no sense. And in addition, we had some language in EPD 8 in the land use and development ordinance that was redundant, some notification requirements of staff that we are proposing to remove. So for the new areas that are coming into EPD 8, I think first and foremost, the goal of ODF and W and the goal of Wasco County Planning is to make clear what areas in Wasco County ODF and W considers sensitive deer and elk habitat and migration paths, and that's really critical. Everything that we have wanted to do in this process, and the public has asked of us, is to create transparency and clarity, so we can demystify the processes that staff do, and so we really look at this as a beneficial tool to make it crystal clear to folks when they are working on development proposals, what the potential impacts are going to be. Keep in mind that again, when folks anywhere in the county are submitting a conditional use permit, there's already a trigger in the conditional use permit language for ODF and W review that specifically has ODF and W weighing in on any adverse impacts that development proposes to wildlife. For type two uses, and for the most part, this is in A1160, we're talking about things like partitions, wineries, utilities, so above and beyond our sort of usual and ordinary activities like farm use. Those folks are gonna have to go through an additional review by ODF and W, which does increase cost and does increase some time. Typically, we're hoping by being transparent, it's not going to come on the back end and be a surprise during the process, but there will be some added steps and some added costs, and again, for conditional use permits, it's gonna stay the same. They're already getting reviewed by ODF and W, but it will include that staff review, so staff will have to write some additional findings based on the criteria in EPD 8, and when I say time difference, sometimes that it's involved in the notification to neighbors, so really, the end result is a little bit of cost and a little bit of money, but what's important to note, because there seems to be a lot of confusion, is that this EPD does not prohibit any development from occurring. It's not a blanket prohibition on development. Really what it is, is guidance for the property owner when they're proposing new development to work with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife staff and see if there's potentially any adverse impacts to habitat or migration paths. And if ODF and W says, yeah, you know, that location's not really gonna be beneficial for where the deer or elk go, then they work with mitigation, so it may be moving the site. Other examples of what we've seen happen is if somebody has some oak on their property, ODF and W may say, hey, it'd be great if we could maybe preserve some of that oak. So those are the kinds of mitigation measures we're talking about with this EPD. As I mentioned, staff, one of the reasons this costs some additional money is because staff has to make additional findings, and all of our findings are based on facts submitted with the application and then analysis that staff does. So it does require a little bit of extra time, but generally, our current planning staff is excellent and kind of knocks it out of the park in terms of timelines comparatively with other counties, so we're not anticipating a huge additional chunk of time. It may be an extra week to, up to a month. EPD 12 is the sensitive bird overlay, and that map is confidential because it's based on nesting sites, and ODF and W requires that we keep it confidential until the time of proposed development, when we're able to show that information directly to property owners. It's important to note that any property owners who are impacted, either being added to the CPD or removed, were sent a special and unique notice, letting them know if they were either coming in or out of this EPD, and they had the opportunity to contact staff and have a conversation, and I have had some conversations with folks about that. This is also based on new data, mostly as far as I understand, as a result of commercial energy facility projects, wind farms, where they had to do extensive studying of, say, raptor habitat, for instance, and identified some new nesting sites, and originally, we had adopted the CPD in 2005, so we're I think it's common sense to understand that birds change their habitat, and so we're a little bit overdue with this map. And I also want to note that this EPD already exempts farm and forest practices, so what we're really talking about again is sort of the unusual activities, industrial activities, commercial activities, other types of activities that occur in these zones outside of the resource uses, and and again, I want to stress that with this EPD, it's not a prohibition on development. This EPD is a little different. It consists of buffers, so little circles around where the nesting sites are, and typically doesn't take up a whole entire piece of property. So if the development's proposed within that circle, within that buffer, then the applicant would be required to submit a sensitive resource plan along with their application, and then they would work with ODF and W on potential mitigation measures, and really, what that typically looks like is modification of construction schedules, so don't really want loud, noisy dust stirring up construction happening during nesting times, or it may be modifications to the actual building to minimize distractions for the nesting species. And as I mentioned, with EPD 8, we're being aggressive in updating the land use and development ordinance in conjunction to make sure that there's no unintended consequences of this update, and during the process, during our roadshow meetings, we got a lot of input from the public that we were able to plug into the EC analysis. That's the economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis to really provide us the ability to make some calls about exemptions, and so, as I mentioned, anything permitted outright in the zone, so that's uses without review, and that includes farm use, so farming is exempt. With A1160, we've proposed to exempt type one uses, so that's where we see things like agricultural structures, like a barn or some other kind of like a pump house or other agricultural structures, and we also heard pretty loud and clear from farmers that they didn't really feel farm dwellings or accessory farm dwellings or relative farm dwellings were impactful, and we were able to support that in the EC analysis to also offer an exemption for those things. So again, really what we're looking at in A1160, first of all, this is a boon for A1160 folks who have previously been in this EPD, but I do want to stress again that really what ODF and W is most concerned about are those unusual kind of activities that happen in our landscape. So that would be things like breeze zones, large commercial scale energy projects, utility projects, commercial activities that aren't in conjunction with agriculture, so those are the kinds of the things that they're concerned about. As I mentioned, we removed some confusing language. We had the section on permitted and conditional uses. We removed the fencing standards that the public felt didn't make any sense. We have added, based on the public request, some recommendations for fencing around deer and elk, and that is in our solution centers webpage on the planning homepage. And we also removed some of the voluntary areas. Okay, so moving on to forest lands, we had two updates that didn't make it into the official, well, more than two updates, but two that are under consideration with this ordinance that didn't make it into the official work plan, but we still wanted to ensure we're updated to have a whole, complete, updated, comprehensive plan. One was goal four, which is for forest lands, and first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that language related to policies and sort of some of the background information was consistent with current practice. Most of this language was, you know, hadn't been updated since it was originally adopted in 83, and our forest activities changed pretty substantially since the 80s, so we wanted to make sure it was consistent and really reflected things like the Oregon Forest Practices Act and had a correct references and findings. We also, as planning commissioners know, have done some extensive work with wildfire, and over the last several years in Moscow County, senior planner Will Smith was able to obtain a grant to do the community planning assistance for wildfire several years ago that did a comprehensive study and analysis of Wasco County and what our wildfire risk is, and then made some recommendations specifically for the comprehensive plan update, which we've gone ahead and included. And Will is also kicking off the Community Welfare Protection Plan update, so that's a separate standalone document that talks about strategies for really creating defensible spaces and safe places given our wildfire risk. And really what we've tried to do with the comp plan is not only make our language consistent with those recommendations and strategies, but also offload some of the hard work so that folks are being sure to check in with those documents, which our natural hazards plans tend to be updated on a more regular schedule. And I did want to flag that I was notified by a member of the public that we had a Scrivener's error, and policy four was repeated from policy, or excuse me, policy five and policy four were basically the same. That was a, it was an error made when we were formatting, and these policies were pre-existing. We're not proposing any substantive changes as such. We just switched them back, but we wanted to flag that for the planning commission and also for members of the public that we're reverting number policy five to the original, and we hope that's gonna make the implementation strategies under policy five a little bit more clear, because those ones are related to some prohibitions we have in template tests and other things related to the transition land studies that happened in the 1990s. So finally, goal eight for statewide land use planning goals is recreation, and really what we heard from the public was a lot of concern about conflicts that arise particularly on roadways in Wasco County between tourists and visitors and commercial agriculture, and it's really talking about bicycles being on the roadways during harvest and how that really creates a dangerous situation for everybody, including folks on combines, moving the combine across from field to field. And then also, some tourists, visitors, they don't really know much about rural Oregon, and so they park their car, use the bathroom right on somebody's fields, and farmers just are very frustrated by that, so while most of our major transportation routes are multimodal, we can't prohibit bicycle activity. What we have made a promise to do is continue to support partner organizations and other folks with really raising awareness for everybody when events are gonna occur, and then for tourists to know what the risks are involved with harvest and really offer them some solutions as far as parking goes and as far as bathrooms go. In addition, with recreation, we have some outreach and other notifications and coordinations that we wanted to make transparent, and then finally, we've been, this department has been circling the drain on the destination resort issue for over almost two decades, and it's because we do have intra, significant interest in developing a destination resort in Wasco County. Typically, the calls are related to areas within the national scenic area where it is prohibited, but it results in staff having to spend a pretty significant time doing analysis every time on where in Wasco County would be eligible. And that detracts from them doing a lot of other important things. So what we're recommending is that we adopt this eligibility map, and basically all it is is a tool to say, hey, if you're interested in destination resort development, these are the only places in Wasco County that you can do it. And I think it's important to stress that the eligibility is based on very specific criteria prescribed by state law. It's nothing we have a lot of flexibility with, but what we do have flexibility with is when we get into rulemaking in terms of actually adopting this into the land use and development ordinance, which we're proposing to do in 2021 and 2022. So concerns with fire, water, all that sort of good stuff, we're gonna be able to address by writing some specific criteria and regulations that will really set the bar even higher than it already is in state law for folks to actually develop a destination resort. set the bar even higher than it already is in state law for folks to actually develop a destination resort. I think it's also important to mention that we did hear a significant amount from farmers in the South County wanting more opportunities for development. And so we really tried to throw everything in the kitchen sink as far as what's allowed by state law for economic development purposes. And so this map, for those who haven't tuned in since March, when we had the first citizen advisory group meeting on this, this map is a little different. Based on citizen input, we removed two places, one on Ty Ridge and one up in Petersburg. The the residents and property owners were very vocal that they did not want to see that. So we did remove them. And what we have left is essentially some areas around Pine Grove and Walter's Corner, Juniper Flat area. And then Big Muddy, so Washington Family Ranch, which is already essentially a youth camp. But were it to be converted at some point, they would have an opportunity for destination resort. And so I already kind of covered this. Again, I want to stress that all this map does is show where we could permit these. It's it's not a tacit approval. It's not a land use decision. But it does give farmers an opportunity to potentially do something different with their land. We also have the ability to modify this map as things change. And as I mentioned, it doesn't waive any permitting processes. So anybody wanting to actually develop a destination resort has to go through a pretty lengthy process. And the state law requirements are are steep. They involve millions of dollars of infrastructure investments and investments in housing. So it's not anything we're predicting we're likely to see anytime soon. But it is something that we have the opportunity to think a little bit more critically about during the little update. So I talked about that. And just a couple other Goal five updates that I wanted to mention.
I'm sorry, I'm really sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to, before we leave destination resorts, in the beginning of this topic, you noted that we have interest in destination resorts in Wasco County. And I was hoping you could just clarify what that means exactly. I feel like there are some citizens who feel like that might mean that we, as a planning program, have interest in developing a destination resort. And we need to be really clear on the record that that's not what that means. It means that we have interest from prospective applicants and developers calling in. So if you could just add to that a little bit before I move on, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Director. And so as as Angie clarified, this isn't something that the planning department necessarily wants to pursue, but it is something we do frequently get calls about from prospective property owners, current property owners and developers who are actively interested in developing destination resorts. And so it's not just outsiders. It is a handful of folks within Wasco County who have been interested for multiple years in developing a destination resort. And just to explain what that looks like is all we can point to is, hey, this is what state statute says where we could permit them. This is kind of our best guess, but it's not official. And so we're not able to make a determination or even entertain a potential application without this eligibility map. That's actually one of the requirements of state law. First up, adopted eligibility map. So what this tool again enables us to do is first say, okay, you're interested, prospective developer. Okay, you're interested in developing a destination resort. Here's our official eligibility map. These are the places officially that you could develop one in Wasco County. Proceed, develop your application, let us know. But it's, yeah, I think as Angie explained, it's not something that we're necessarily advocating for or wanting to see happen. It's just something that we are aware, we have consistent public interest in. And I'm again, want to offer a tool that's that's clear and transparent. And okay, so back to the additional Goal five updates. We switched from, after a lot of discussion with with different leadership, we don't see a lot of applications, maybe once every five to 10 years, related to some of our historical landmarks in Wasco County. Usually it's for things like modifications to the building. We decided rather than have to support a body because essentially what's happened is that body hasn't met for so many decades that many of those folks are no longer with us. So it was going to be kind of an issue to keep a separate council together. And so what we've done is switched that landmarks commission responsibilities directly to the planning director. And we hope that's going to streamline that process for those historical landmark applications when they do happen in the future and make it easier for folks, so much less of a hurdle to make any modifications to that structure. We've also had to modify some of the aggregate and mining language that we got some additional clarity on from the LCD. So that has has been updated. And you'll also see the the format's slightly different. We removed some of the two columns throughout the content just to make it easier to read. And also, we have the findings with the references. We've made them into end notes because I think it makes a little bit more sense for the for the reader to understand what the findings are actually tied to in terms of the policy and implementation strategies. That does it for staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from the planning commission.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have questions for Dr. Kelly?
I have a couple. Kelly, could you go over what is safe harbor?
So there are two, two essential ways. And according to the Oregon Administrative Rules, six sixty, Division twenty three, that we can develop protections for for any of the resources listed under Goal five. And that's a nice big laundry list. There's a safe harbor method. And there's a specific inventory method. Based on our consultations with D L C D and O D F and W, we we did the safe harbor method. And that's basically O D F and W tells us. I want to give a specific example because it varies from resource to resource. But and O D F and W gave us their inventory, so their maps, their information about where the protected animals, species are. And we, 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 we adopted that because we said, you're the trusted experts. We don't have the expertise in in terms of biology or wildlife. So then that kicks us over from having to do a specific one by one inventory to just trusting the data that that O D F and W presented. And it's not a function of us even getting the option of choosing safe harbor or doing a direct inventory. The Oregon Administrative's rules is pretty particular. And there's, I think, four or five triggers that say, okay, if you hit one of these triggers, then you're required to use the safe harbor method. And that's all much more eloquently and specifically detailed in the staff report. But that's sort of the fifty second version.
So we are using the safe harbor method in the sense we're trusting O D F W.
That is correct.
Okay. The other question I have is dealing with O D F W. Do we know what information they have that they're defining the wildlife area migration paths? And do we know what their update frequencies are?
We do have two representatives of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife on the call. I did invite them to to answer that question directly. We can start with Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, hi, this is Jeremy Thompson, Oregon, Oregon Fish and Wildlife. So the map that we have presented through our data is kind of a conglomeration of survey data that is conducted annually by our agency for this map at the local level, as well as an effort that took place throughout the western states and fish and wildlife agencies to better define what constitutes winter range. And kind of in a nutshell, what that definition is, is it's an area that's used frequently by wildlife in the winter months, so December one to April one. So looking at our survey data, we put this map together as an agency based on survey data and that definition used by Western Association of Fish and Wildlife Agencies.
So you update yearly?
We do the surveys annually. I mean, if we saw a drastic change, then that would potentially constitute an update. Those definitions are pretty set. We're very fortunate in Wasco County that our habitat conditions have been very good and consistent throughout time. So if there was a change, we'd have that opportunity to update it. But I don't foresee a major change coming for our wildlife habitat overlay based on the conditions on the ground that we see.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Two of them. One, why to fishing game? Why was not the Columbia District included? If you're going to include all of the county, why did they exclude that? And then the second question is, on the resort overlay, per the maps that we have, it shows it goes to the White River. And White River is a wild and scenic river. Is there a build back distance from that?
So I can speak to that Columbia District exclusion in the map. That's actually an area that we've identified as a deer de-emphasis area, specifically because of, you know, the, it's intense agriculture in that zone, with it being almost entirely, you know, production wheat fields through that area that was removed years ago from our inventory of important wildlife areas. So that that fell out of that definition. And I'd probably have to kick it back to Kelly or Angie for the resort map question.
Thank you, Jeremy. So with the wildlife area, we have a couple other triggers that would, would, what you're asking about, I think, is setbacks. If it falls within, right next to the river, they'd be subject to those standards within EPD seven, which are the Wild and Scenic and Oregon Scenic Waterways and also Natural Areas. And so they'd have some constraints. It would automatically bump it up to a conditional use permit. We've, if you remember last year, we removed the prohibition against COPs being elevated or being prohibited. So it would be a CUP. And then we obviously have other setbacks within the general code for riparian areas for flood plains. So typically, you'd be looking at a hundred to a two hundred foot distance from from the riparian area.
Anybody, any other commissioners have questions? Okay, we'll move on to audience participation at this point. Dr. Kelly, are you going to call on the people?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so and I'm going to read out the first three people so that they can be prepared. The first person is Nicole, the second is Brett, and the third is Kristen. Yeah, we've only got one Kristen signed up. So Nicole, Brett, and then Kristen. And just a reminder, before you speak, if you can state your name and your address for the record, that's how we are able to mail you the decision.
A reminder that star six unmute you if you're on the phone.
So again, the first person to speak was Nicole. Okay, Chair, I'm not hearing from Nicole. We can go ahead and move on to Brett, Brett Storkson. Okay, not hearing from Brett. We can all come back to these. The third person on the list is Kristen Curran.
Yes, thank you. I'm Kristen Curran, and I do not have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so the next person on the list is Tom Peters. Tom Peters, if you can just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Tom Peters and I have no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. The next person on the list is Elizabeth Turner. Ms. Turner. Okay, I've got two more names on the list. I got to check my updated list, but I've got John Pearson and then Sheila Dooley. Mr. Pearson?
Okay, yes, I guess my concerns. I've been subject to this overlay without in previous years without any notification. And at least this time, there is some notification to some people. But I'm trying to figure out who why this is being done. In other words, if you're going to take people's property rights away from them, and you are taking some of them away, it would seem that the county, the state, or fish and wildlife should be compensating people for the rights they're taking away and the burdens they're putting on their property. I mean, it's it's a taking without compensation.
Okay, thank you. The next person registered to speak is Sheila Dooley.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Sheila.
I just had a few comments. I know I talked last time, so I want to keep it short. But let's see, as of Friday, there were only three thousand firefighters total fighting all of the wildfires burning in Oregon. Although this number has increased since then. In comparison, there were eight hundred fighting Moser Creek Fire. So I think we were really lucky. The Moser Creek Fire happened when it did, or think about how much worse it would have been if it was happening now with only local probably firefighters to fight it. The wildland urban interfaces burning across Oregon continues to get dryer each year. The frequency and severity of fires are increasing. There are currently thirty five fires in Oregon as of today. We have a unique and valuable pine oak habitat in Wasco County that's only found in a narrow band in Oregon. Many species rely on it. Forest land has habitat value for big game. Both of these have been compromised by development and the recent fires. One result is increased human animal conflict. An example is a person in the area who moved into bear habitat and now wants to kill a bear because it got into his trash can. So in closing, I urge you to please adopt the comprehensive plan as proposed with the wildfire provisions added to Goal four and not adopt new provisions that would increase the risk of fire. Thank you. So I need to give my address, three three hundred Vensel Road, Mosher.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, so I've got three other people that are signed up. Jill Barker, Sheila Olson, and John Gill. Jill Barker?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jill.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Goal four. It's the forest land. I'm getting an echo here, so let me mute my computer. Anyway, I agree with a lot of the Goal four forest lands, the comprehensive plan. I strongly agree that Wasco County should only allow residential development as a limited conditional use in F two zones and that the minimum lot sizes there should stay eighty acres. And I also believe that any of the residential uses should be limited and adhere to the county requirements regarding wildfire risk, the conserving of all the habitats, values, and the wildlife protection. I also agree that the I also agree that the functioning water supply should be implemented prior to any approval of any residential development in F2s, and that all development minimizes the risk of wildfire and implements the application of fire safety standards. And then I have a question about reading over the comprehensive plan, the existing one and the proposed one. I noticed that there's, it's on page, well, pages are different, but it's 347 that I have. And it says, "Requests for dwellings that are not in conjunction with forest use on property which is located outside of a rural fire protection district shall not be accepted by the approving authority." And then it says, "Unless a contract for services has been reached with a rural fire protection district." So my question is, is this an option that's available to those of us who live out of the fire protection district? Can we contract with either Mosher Fire Department or Mid-Columbus Fire and Rescue? Does anyone know?
I can just say, thank you for your comments. And I can say, in the past, some areas have been approved up where you are, Jill, by Mosher Fire Department, but typically they don't have the resources. So if you were much closer to the Mosher City limits, that may be an option for you, but typically I'm pretty far out. They don't have the ability to do it.
Okay, so is that true? Can you contract to a private fire company?
I would defer that to Senior Planner Will Smith. He might be able to better answer that.
Okay. I just, I won't go in the language, and I never really understood that unless a contract for services has been reached with a rural fire protection district. So I thought, oh, there's an option for, you know, it still is, you know, conditional, it sounds like.
I would just thank you also, Jill, for your comment, and let you know that if you wanted to have that conversation outside of this hearing, we'd be happy to have some dedicated time.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. The next person, is that all your comments, Jill?
Yeah, that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you so much. The next person to comment is Shaila Olson. Shaila, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. This is Shaila Olson. I'm the District Manager for Wasco County Soil and Water Conservation District, and our office is located at 2325 River Road, Suite 3 in the DOWls. So I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to provide some comments today. The purpose of the Soil and Water Conservation District is to assist and promote voluntary natural resource conservation and enhancement on ag and forest lands throughout Wasco County. And so I'm just really glad to see that you're working with ODFW on streamlining the existing permitting processes for most properties, uses and activities. And I appreciate that Angie reached out to the district to be involved and provide comment today. So again, I think it's very positive that you're exempting certain farm and forestry uses, which do not conflict with resource protections. And I just hope that this includes our conservation best management practices. I saw those BMPs called out in the definitions, but I didn't see them specifically called out throughout the rest of the documents. But basically, our BMPs are tried and true conservation practices that benefit soil and water quality, enhance and protect wildlife habitat, and promote fire and fuels management on farm and forest land. And so I just really hope that going forward, that we can work together to include voluntary conservation, restoration, and enhancement projects by supporting these BMPs as some of those exempted uses or perhaps an expedited process. And so I just look forward to continuing to be involved in the rulemaking process going forward as we work to update the land use, LUDO going forward. And so again, just thank you for your time, and I really am excited to be a part of this process.
Thank you so much, Shaila. So the last person I have registered is John Gill.
Good afternoon. My name is John Gill, and my address is 85327 South Junction Road. You have my mailing address that I filled out on the form online, which is probably where you should send any of the documents or email. I was just concerned a little bit about the EPD 8 and the wildlife zone. My property was not covered. I think it was in that zone, but it wasn't covered in the ODFW map, which I believe now requires siding within 300 feet of a pre-existing road to 1992. Is that correct? Is that what the new language is going to say?
Can you clarify your question? I'm sorry. So the rule is always required for new dwellings to locate within 300 feet of the nearest access or roadway with potential variances given circumstance. So that language is not changing.
That's not changing, but I don't think I was in the wildlife overlay prior to this update to the plan.
So if you were proposing a new dwelling that is in a farm dwelling, you would be subject to those rules, yes.
And there's some provision to allow for alternative approvals subject to ODFW?
That is correct.
Okay. And maybe I just make one other comment that people may not be aware of. The elk in the region where I am, apparently the populations have been doing quite well because it used to be that the cow tag ran for six weeks in the fall. Now the cow tag runs from August 1st to March 31st. And now the bull tags used to be two seasons of a total of, I think, 15 days, now run from November 1st to November 30th to get a bull elk. If you don't get a bull elk, you get to have it as a cow tag till March 31st. So I guess I question just some of the conflicts that maybe are additional burden on a land owner to do certain things. Anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I can run through this list of people who didn't respond again. Nicole, Nicole, are you on the call?
Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
I'd like to make sure that we keep this to the, you know, making comments pertinent to the hearing, not a question and answer section for everybody, anything that needs to be. You guys can field questions at the office if people have questions that need to be answered like that.
Thank you, Chair. So we will no longer answer specific questions. I'm happy to do that outside the hearing, though. Nicole, are you available for comment? Okay. Kristen?
No comment at this time, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kristen. Tom, you can shake your head if you've decided to comment. I can see you. No, you're good. Okay. Elizabeth Turner? Okay, I'm not hearing anybody who's signed up through the registration. I know we do have a few folks on the call. I'd invite you to unmute yourself at this point in time and then state your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Lanny Matier, and I'm at Antelope. And I, this is really a long, confusing set of rules and regulation it looks to me like you're putting together. And I was wondering if you could make it, and I'm not going to ask you the question because I know you're not going to answer it, but I would like for you to make a two-page synopsis that would show all the changes you're making, one column of what it was, another column of how it's going to change, what it's going to change to, and another column as to how it's going to affect us. And that way, I think, I know it'll help the property owners, and I'm certain it has to help the county commissioners, because I don't know how many pages you have in all this paperwork that you've put together, but I'd say there's probably almost a ream of paper we'd have to go through, and it's kind of complicated. One other column that should be on there is the specific law requiring any change, if the law does require the change. If it doesn't require the change, tell us that. Because, just because it says, it appears that there might be a law, doesn't mean there really is a law. There might be a law that you have to review, but there wouldn't necessarily be a law as to what you have to review or how you have to review it. So if you could fix a synopsis for us and the county commissioners, I believe we'd all appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else on the phone who would like to deliver comment?
Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
Kathleen Cantrell, due for Oregon. I came on late, and I just wanted clarification. Is this still a continuation of a evidentiary hearing for the Planning Commission?
I apologize. Chair directed me not to answer any questions, so.
Can I ask one more question? It appears that, I did some research on the meaning of an evidentiary hearing, and it is specifically for the purpose of gathering testimony, and it appears that you are limiting testimony, and I am putting every commissioner on our planning commission in a position to be aware of what's happening in your meeting today. It is not patriotic, it's not American, and I am a taxpayer, and I'm very frustrated. And that's all I have to say. Put that on the record, please.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone that would like to give comment? I don't have anybody else on my list here, Chair, and I'm not seeing anybody else participating. So I don't know if you want to give one last call and then close for public comment.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment for the record? Star six is the unmute button. Okay, does the commission have any questions for any of the commenters? Will we go there next? Does any of the commissioners have any questions for the commenters? Okay, if there's no further testimony and no requests, that the record remain open. The public hearing is closed, and the Planning Commission will enter into deliberation. Do any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to ask or talk about? Okay, would entertain any motions, anything that needs to go on here?
Chair, I would like to make a motion to recommend adoption of the proposed amendments of the Wasco County Comprehensive Plan as discussed to the Wasco County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner McIntyre.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
I would like, I have some discussion on the proposed recreation.
A point of order.
I can't get in.
We need a second.
I have a question.
Is that Leroy?
Yes, I have a question on the motion.
Let's ask a question.
A point of order. We need a second before we can go into a discussion. So therefore, I would like to second what Linda said so we can bring it to a discussion.
Okay, the motion is to adopt, to adopt it as, can you say it again, Lynn? Now I'm confused because everybody's went.
I move to recommend adoption of the proposed amendments of the Wasco County Comprehensive Plan to the Wasco County Board of Commissioners.
And I would like to second that.
Okay, Commissioner McIntyre's moved to adopt the proposed amendment for the comprehensive plan to the Board of Commissioners, and Commissioner Davis has seconded. Now we can open it up for discussion. Vicky, I think you were first.
Yes, I would like to have the recreation overlay map removed from this. Due to the number of phone calls I have received from people on the flat, it would affect highly profitable farmland, and I just don't think it's appropriate for the location.
Okay, so is it be, Commissioner Booth, would you like to make a comment?
On the motion, could we please define what the motion is? We say on amendments, but we haven't specified what the amendments are.
Amendments related to the resolution.
It's which resolution? We have two of them.
Leroy, the presentation that we've just gone through is recommending amendments. And so what Lynn has said is to make a recommendation that we take those amendments forward to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, but it's in direct, it's directly related to one of the, one of the.
The comp plan.
Yeah, but it's not the entire thing. It's, we, there's two of them to go through. We only went through one, from my understanding.
If I may, commissioners, it's specifically relevant to ordinance 20-001.
Thank you. That's what I wanted.
So, um, as far as Vicky's point goes, Kelly, the adoption of the ODFW map is not anything other than, basically, the ODFW map, as far as I understand it, is already what we have to use in order to approve any of the housing or anything like that. It's just that our map is different than theirs, and so if they go through and the ODFW decides that they want to stand up, then this is essentially putting both maps as the same, as opposed to us having one and ODFW having another, right?
That is correct, but I think, Chair, she was referencing the Destination Resort Eligibility Map.
Yes.
Oh, I thought she was talking about the ODFW map.
No, I believe she was talking about the Destination Resort Eligibility Map.
Okay, so a question on that.
Go ahead. Sorry.
So a question on the Destination Resort map, isn't it, don't we, isn't there some law or some reason why we have to adopt or to make life easier, at least when people come in, if we have a zone that shows destination resorts? If somebody can meet all of the requirements, be that water, fire, all the other stuff that they're going to have to meet in order to do it, it at least gives somebody a starting plan so that you don't, so that the staff doesn't have to go through on every one and say, you know, look, we'll have to run down all the work and try to figure out all the locations for it. It's basically creating.
It's just an illustrative tool to show where we would be able to permit them. It doesn't mean we will permit them. It doesn't mean we want to permit them. It just means where in Wasco County would be eligible.
Now, if I understand it correctly, the Destin- Now, if I understand it correctly, the destination resort map, one of the criterias for that is that it's not on high-value farmland, correct?
That is correct. It also can't be within APD 8, so, can't be anywhere where there's sensitive wildlife, and then it has some, some additional criteria that's prescribed by state law.
Okay, so, does the area in Juba Flats fall into that criteria, seems to be the question?
No, it does not. That's, that's, this, the map was developed using that specific state requirements, the criteria, to illustrate where in Wasco County we would be able to permit them. And that, those areas that are on the proposed map are the only places in Wasco County we'd, we'd be able to permit them, given the state criteria. So they're not high-value farmland, they're not within-
I'm hearing-
Just to be, just to be clear, high about, the definition of high value in terms of state law, which is soil-based.
Commissioners, I'd just like to remind you that you've modified this map once before, because we heard loudly from the community that there, there actually was productive farmland, and there was a significant fire risk and concern about water. So certainly, if you're hearing strongly or feeling strongly about, similarly to those kinds of concerns for the areas that are shown on the draft map in front of you, there are options for your consideration there. There is some flexibility. Like Kelly has said, this is an optional efficiency tool for us. We are not advocating that any destination resorts go anywhere in the county. We simply spend a lot of time running down these, these questions for, for people that call in with questions about what they can do on their property or what a property might be capable of if they're a prospective buyer. This map will just reduce our research time. That research time takes away from issuing faster permits from residents who have rather simple projects. So it's optional, we can modify from what we hear from the landowners, and if you have concerns, this is the perfect time to discuss them.
May I add something? Am I recognized?
Yeah, go ahead, Vicki.
I think you need to take in account production, not soil type, due to the irrigated alfalfa and some of the highest wheat crops in South County come right off of that land.
I just, I don't, I don't think that's our decision to make on what qualifies as high-value cropland, is it? Dr. Kelly, I think that's already determined by-
No, that's determined by state law.
If I can just add, may I just add some couple of comments? One is, is that with the restrictions of the new ODFW and all this stuff, it really isolates where we could even have an option of recreational ground, okay? So we, we're, we're really forced into not saying that we're going to put recreational resorts in here. It's the only places that really, that you've come up with, that we could, if it follows the real stringent laws in regards to how you go about doing it. So, and yes, we are, we do not designate soil types or, or, you know, qualify for what's good ground or not. That state, we're forced upon, we're, we're forced to, to accept that. So at this point in time, I, I see us just moving forward like it is and having, at least having it there, so that, I don't think we should take it totally off of the table. I think it should be at the, looking at 20 or 30 years down the road, we, I don't think we should get a chokehold to the, to the, to the citizens here or the farmers. So I'd like to see it stay as it is.
There any other discussion about the motion we have on the table?
Will we be modifying it to address the 20-001? Just so we're clear as to what we're making the motion on.
Yeah, that's, it's a- Yeah, I guess we can put that in there, it's not a big deal, that's what we were talking about the whole time. So it's a post amendment, post acknowledgement plan amendment to revise goals 4 and 8. These files are related to ordinance 20-001. Do you want to make another motion on that, or is that good enough?
I don't think we need to make another motion, that's just clarification.
Okay, is there any other comments on or questions or discussion before we move to a vote?
So are we voting on both of them at one time?
No, we're, we're voting on, on the post acknowledgement plan amendment to revise goals 4 and 8. These files are related to ordinance 20.001.
And, and to be clear, Chair, also work task 18, which is Goal 5, and the sensitive wildlife maps related to Goal 5.
Right, sorry.
And, sorry, also APD 8 for the land use and development ordinance.
If you're ready, Chair, I can call roll for a vote.
I'm ready for a vote if there's no further comments or questions or discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Ashley?
No.
Commissioner Hargrave?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you good.
You can hear me. Okay, I've been trying to, I was trying to comment and I was muted, I couldn't get in during the comment period. Yes.
Commissioner Shannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. So, the commission, let's see, we can request proposed findings conclusion from any party to the hearing. And the decision, this is a decision of the planning commission on ordinance 20-001. The ordinance will be heard October 7th and October 21st by the Wasco County Board of Commission. We have voted to, to adopt the proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to the Board of Commissioners at this time. So I'd like to take about an eight-minute break. Everybody take a break and then we'll hustle back and keep going.
Chair?
Yes.
We forgot to do the minutes, so we'll have to circle back to that at the end.
For September 1st?
Yes.
Okay. We're about ready to go again. Okay, I'm going to start it up, are you guys ready? Okay. So this time I'd like to open the second hearing. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of the planning commission's consideration of land use application file 921-120-000072, a post acknowledgement plan amendment to revise the plan revisions, process and goal exception chapters, and adopt a new introduction to Wasco County 2040. This is related to ordinance 20-004. The procedure I'd like to follow tonight is, the planning department staff will present the report, provide an opportunity for the public to testify. The hearing is scheduled for two hours. This one is scheduled for, the overall hearing scheduled for two hours, this is the second half of it. We will try to conclude both hearings by 5:00 PM. Testimony will be limited to three minutes. Staff will time each comment period and mute when three minutes have expired. The rules of evidence first follows, no person shall present irrelevant, immaterial or unduly repetitious testimony or evidence. If you have submitted written comments, please do not restate it in oral testimony unless you have further information to add. If you testified on September 1st, you will be asked to only, you will be asked only to testify on new information. Evidence received shall be of a quality that reasonable persons reply upon, rely upon in the conduct of their daily affairs. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the criteria applicable to the subject hearing. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes further appeal based on that issue. Does any of them, any commission member wish to disqualify themselves for any personal or financial, financial interest in this matter? Does any commission member wish to report any significant ex parte or pre-hearing contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of Wasco County in this matter? At this time, I'm gonna ask all the participants to mute themselves and hold questions until the ends of, until the end of the staff's presentation. At this point, Dr. Kelly, please begin your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Just takes a little bit of minute for me to get going here. So as you stated, the second hearing is to address ordinance 20-004, which are post acknowledgement plan amendments to make revisions to the remaining chapters relevant to the comprehensive plan. These are process-related chapters or explanatory informational chapters that are critical to the work that we do in the planning department, but don't have any specific policy or implementation strategies. And that includes the revision process, goal exceptions, and the introduction. Starting with the chapter 15, that is the plan revisions process that, that's all criteria and language you should be familiar with from reading staff reports for the last several years. Essentially, it's the criteria staff has to address in their staff reports when updating the comprehensive plan. It was previously chapter 11, we're moving it to 15. So after all the goals, chapters, we've put it in the new format, moved, changed around some of the language to make it more transparent and clear, and added a finding. There are no other substantive changes recommended for the actual criteria. As I mentioned, the purpose of this chapter is its criteria that we use in staff reports for updating comprehensive plan. The chapter 16 is another one of the chapters that was in the comp plan. We're moving it towards the end. I wanted to really briefly talk about what a goal exception is because I realized that's a little jargony. So rural planning out in the counties in Oregon mainly consists of resource lands. So that's farm and forest. In some jurisdictions, they also have mineral, mineral resources zones. Anytime somebody wants to take something out of resource use, they have to prove up that they qualify what's called an exception to one of the goals. So goal three is agricultural lands, goal four, as we talked about earlier this evening, is forest lands. And they have to be able to meet some certain criteria to basically rezone. So this is a unique component of the Oregon statewide land use system and why rezones are not very common in rural areas in Oregon. We had, when we wrote the comp plan originally in 1983, we had a list of areas that were identified as what we call a committed lands exception. So it means the, the staff at the time, based on the analysis that they conducted, didn't think these lands should be zoned for farm or forest. And that's because either they were developed subdivisions committed to industrial use, commercial use, and therefore really didn't have the potential to revert to, to farm or forest. One of the critical things that we did with this update is in 1983, obviously, the scenic area was dealt what wasn't a scenic area. It was, we called it the gorge overlay. And we had specific criteria according to Wasco County to protect those resources. Obviously, the scenic, the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Act was adopted following our comprehensive plan update. And the result of this is this chapter had stuff all kind of mixed and matched. And we have the scenic area stuff in with the Wasco County stuff. And if you, you didn't really know the county very well, you would find that really confusing. So we wanted to streamline that and make it very clear which lands were national scenic area lands and which areas are not in the national scenic area. And I want to clarify that the national scenic area actually has its own comprehensive plan. That's the management plan that was recently, has been going through its own update, gorge 2020 from the Columbia River Gorge Commission. But when we consulted with the Department of Land Conservation and Development about updating this chapter to make sure we were in line with what state law requires of this inventory, we did pose the question whether or not we should remove those national scenic area lands. And the recommendation and staff agreed was that if anything were to ever happen with the national scenic area, it's important for us to preserve those committed exceptions in case the national scenic area were to go away so that they wouldn't automatically revert to a resource lands. They'd still be able to maintain the same use. This chapter involved kind of an extensive revision of the information presented and the way it was done. And one of those things was to make consistent mapping. And this is an example of that. We just tried to use similar colors. Updated parcel information because obviously it's over several decades, some of the parcels have changed. Tax lots went through a major revision in the history of Wasco County. So we, a lot of the tax lots were old tax lots. So it would be difficult for somebody doing research to, to figure out where they are now. So we updated those. Included the past and the current zoning for, for informational purposes, the date and the method of approval, and that's a requirement by state law, and then a brief description why the, the exception was essentially granted. And I just want to go back here. The purpose again of this chapter really serves as an inventory for all those, those rezones or, or goal exceptions that we've approved in Moscow County. Most people would use this for research purposes. So if they're researching development applications or, or looking at the past of a property, it doesn't really necessarily serve any, any other function than that. And so finally, the, the 1983 comp plan had a very, very brief introduction. And one of our main goals and one of the things we promised the Land Conservation and Development Commission is that we would utilize this process to really help provide counties good information about how to do a comprehensive plan update. That's really been our goal is, is first and foremost, to make this process transparent, to increase citizen participation, and really put our ear to the ground and listen to what the citizens are recommending. And part of that is, is providing a framework by which they're able to understand the documentation and the, the rules that we use in making land use decisions. So the introduction chapter is very large. It, and it's because it includes all kinds of stuff. And we thought it was important to memorialize some of the history of planning in Wasco County. We've been doing planning formally since the 1950s and had, you know, obviously a lot of changes with state law and the adoption of the national scenic area. But we've included a lot of that information for, for members of the public and also planners of the future so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel in doing that research. We've provided a legal framework, so it's very clear the rules that govern what is in a comprehensive plan and what the requirements are. The, the comp plan has been designed around the statewide land use planning goals. So those 14 goals that are applicable to Wasco County. And we've explained what those are in this section. Included what the components of a comprehensive plan are, how to use it. So sort of a how-to section. We've talked about, about this process, Wasco County 2040, you know, what, when, where, why, how, to explain to people in the future what this process looks like. We've also included if future map updates or inventory updates are needed, what the rules are that pertain to Wasco County. And included definitions, obviously, which are critical to any land use planning document. And then also wanted to include the county overall values and vision, which have been really critical in defining our, our pioneering pathways to prosperity and really the, the values and mission we used as a guiding force during this process. And so that chapter is almost entirely new, but again, really informational in, in purposes. The only exception would be it does list some of the inventories we've adopted maps by reference because we use the geographic information systems as our official comprehensive plan and official zoning map rather than paper maps as we were want to do in 1983. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have at this time.
Okay, does any commissioners have any questions for Dr. Kelly at this time? Okay, if not, Dr. Kelly, do you have a list of people who've registered to comment for this section?
The only person that was listed who indicated this was something they wanted to talk about was Mr. Tom Peters.
Okay. Mr. Peters?
Get my screen working here. I have no comment on it right now.
Okay.
It's just very hard to follow these notes and this packet, but that's a different discussion.
Yeah, a lot of it's, it's, it is. That's why we have Dr. Kelly. So she does her best. Is there anybody else, Kelly, that you have for?
That was the only person registered. At this time, I, I welcome anybody to unmute themselves, state their name and address for the record and provide comment. Chair, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, star six is how you unmute your telephone if anybody's struggling on to get unmuted. Okay. There's no further testimony. And no request that the record remain open. The public hearing is closed and the planning commission will enter into deliberation. Any of the commissioners have any deliberation on? It's gonna be nine. Let's see, this one is gonna be 921-120. Opposed acknowledgement plan amendment to revise the plan revision process and goal exception chapters and adopt a new introduction to Wasco County 2040. This is related to ordinance 20-004. Did anybody have any deliberation for it? If not, entertain the motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt the documents as you stated in reference to 20-004.
I second it.
Okay, Commissioner Booth, motion that we adopt the documents for 921-120-00072, opposed acknowledgement plan amendment to revise the plan revision process and goal exception chapters and adopt a new introduction to Wasco County 2040 is related to ordinance 20-004. Commissioner Ashley seconded the motion. Let's open it up for discussion. Not hearing any discussion. Director Brewer, if you'd like to call roll for a vote.
Commissioner Ashley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hargrave?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
I hear Commissioner Willis trying to get through. Do you want me to pause? Yes, oh, thank you. I apologize. Commissioner Davis, did I call you yet?
Yes, she did. I said yes.
Your answer was yes. Commissioner Shannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
And I think that's, did I miss anyone? I paused there for Commissioner Willis, and I fear I got lost in my order. Did I miss anyone? Okay, so I, I have I have six yeses, which means I missed someone. Okay, so I had Commissioner Ashley, Commissioner Hargrave, Commissioner McIntyre, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Shannon, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Swift as a non-voting. Okay, motion passes. Excuse me for my, my error there.
So the decision of the planning commission is to approve the documents in related, in relation to 921-120-00072, opposed acknowledgement plan amendment to revise the plan revision process and goal exception chapters and adopt a new introduction of Wasco County 24. This is related to ordinance 20-004. This ordinance will be heard October 7th and October 21st by the Wasco County Board of Commissioners. So that closes that hearing. And then we'll, I would, does anybody have any discussion on the meetings, on the minutes from the meeting of September 1st? I would call for a vote. Or a motion, sorry. Sorry, Vicki, go ahead.
I just moved that we approve them as submitted.
Nice second.
Second. Okay, Commissioner Ashley moves that we approve the minutes as presented for September 1st meeting, and it was seconded by Commissioner Booth. Any discussion? Call for a vote.
Yes.
Do we need a roll call?
No, I think you can do a voice vote on this one.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Say nay. Okay, motion passes. Now, is there anything else that we need? We have, I'd like to thank Dr. Glover for all her hard work. She's truly an asset. And I'd like to give Director Brewer a chance to give us a rundown on anything she may have.
I don't have a director's report to share with you this afternoon, but I do want to just reiterate a big thank you to you all for your diligence and, and perseverance in this process. It's been a couple of years. It's the first county in more than 20 years to go through voluntary periodic review. Your dedication to your community and this program is admirable, and I really appreciate, genuinely appreciate how much of your time you've volunteered to this work. Also, I'd like to echo Chair Shannon's comments by Dr. Kelly, Houseley Glover. She is truly a talented professional and a wonderful project manager to have on our team to help us navigate this complex process. Hundreds and hundreds of pages are the outcome of thousands of pages of research and partner agency coordination. And I'm very grateful for her efforts. Our partner agencies have been fantastic. Thank you to Fish and Wildlife and SWCD for attending this evening. And a big thank you to the members of the public who attended this evening, but also for our roadshow events over the last couple of years. The out, the out sort of outpouring of support, if you will, of just in their attendance and participation and paying attention. We really appreciate. We've intentionally bombarded you with notifications and postcards and websites and blog posts and things because we want you to be
because we want you to be fully aware of what we're working on and know that we're doing it with the goal of increasing transparency and making progress on the document that is supposed to help you achieve the vision that you would like to see happen in Wasco County. So we really, we think about this as the people's plan. We're really truly here to further the goals of the people of Wasco County. So just a big thank you and applaud your efforts, everyone on the call. Couple more hearings to the board and then we will successfully be done with periodic review and start a much larger conversation, if you can imagine, updating the ordinances moving forward. So just a big thank you. And, and I would offer, if you have any questions about any of the other things we're working on, I'm happy to entertain questions this evening. That makes it easy.
I just don't feel like you're that popular today, Director Brewer, so.
I can appreciate that. Certainly appreciate that.
We do. We do have a meeting in October, right, though?
We have a hearing in October for a scenic area ordinance appeal. And, excuse me, I'm losing my feet. And we will be reconvening you all in November, specifically talk about ordinance.
Just to continue what she was saying, our meeting in November will be a joint CAG PC session, and we're gonna just talk a little bit about the Lidoscope for 2021, 2022. And that, we encourage the public to attend that.
Well, thanks to the staff for all the hard work. You guys just, are just been great.
Definitely. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to close.
I would move to close the meeting.
I know that we.
Okay, Commissioner McIntyre moves as close. Commissioner Ashley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate everything you do, Dr. Kelly.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.